So we go ahead and call the meeting to order. First item of business is closed meeting. It resolved the Montgomery County Board of Supervisors of Montgomery County, Virginia, hereby enters into the closed meeting for the purpose of discussing the following. Section 2.2-3711, paragraph one, discussion, consideration or interviews of prospective candidates for employment, assignment, appointment, promotion, performance, demotion, salaries, disciplining or resignation of specific officers, appointees or employees of any public body. Number one, the planning commission. Is there a motion?
Motion.
Second.
I have a motion and a second and discussion. Adam Secretary.
Ms. Flanagan.
Aye.
Mr. King.
Aye.
Mr. Moss.
Aye.
Ms. Spahn.
Aye.
Mr. Shackle.
Aye.
Shackle, Shachaski.
Aye.
Six ayes.
We are in closed session. So we go ahead and call the meeting to order. Our first item of business is closed meeting. It resolved the Montgomery County Board of Supervisors of Montgomery County, Virginia, hereby enters into the closed meeting for the purpose of discussing the following. First up, presentations and recognitions. David Clark. Department of Transportation.
I've got a few maintenance updates and one construction update. I'll start with the construction. There's a secondary road construction project going on right now, part of your six-year plan. That's Yellow Silver Road, hard surfacing of Yellow Silver Road all the way through. It's going very well. Still hope to finish this calendar year. Much before this calendar year because paving in December is usually not very, very great. So we're hoping to get that in November. And we're working well with the, all the property owners out there right now and getting that fleet that does include crossing railroad tracks as well. It's kind of a complicated project, which is why it's last. I think Yellow Silver Road on the six-year plan, literally thirty years ago. As plans have been cut various times, it stayed on and finally rose to the top of the list. We've done it in pieces. If you're familiar with the road, we've done a little bit on each end. That middle part's the hardest. Most roads, most of the easy roads have been already completed in the county anyway, as you all well know. So, but that will see the end of construction by the end of this year on Yellow Silver Road. Rest of this past month has been taken up with various maintenance issues. Pretty much everything we do in the maintenance book, we're catching up on a lot of gravel roads, even dust control between the rains, as well as tree cleanup. We have had rain and wind. Some patching on Union Valley and Janelle Road. Cedar Run and Deer Croft and Mill Point. Brush cutting on McCoy and on Eagle Brook, Hollow, Grand Creek, kind of all over the place there. Shoulder work on some mostly primary roads. Route eleven, Route one fourteen, some one four sixty business, kind of the midway area. There. Milled and paved on the underpass, railroad underpass tunnel, Buster's Gate, it got pretty rough. That's a delicate place to do because you can't lose any clearance. It's already pretty, pretty short to there. So you do have to build approaches to that. And then spent quite a lot of time just on our lot, getting all of our equipment ready for winter. Whether we do this every October, have a dry run, a storm situation. We put spreaders on the backs of the pickup trucks, plows on, make sure everything's in working order. Make notes of things that aren't, try to get everything repaired. First one falling out of the sky. That's about all I have as far as updates. I'll take questions. Some of the things that we've been working on going are still ongoing, tuning speed limits and a couple of other things. But I'd like to take any other requests. And I don't think they got to those children things on Allegheny Springs yet either.
You just took away my question.
I'm sorry, because they've been out there. I told them to get, fix the drainage job. It's a county line too. There's a pond that keeps falling out there. Sorry.
Thanks for making me first, but we'll go around the room. Supervisor Shepard.
I managed to get some hot haul paving in North Stand Ridge. Here's a couple of pretty good sized ones on Brunswick Drive, if you can get to them.
Which one?
Brunswick.
Okay.
Check it out. Price Ford.
I know, yeah.
And I haven't been out Charlotte Drive, which comes off of that. So I don't know about it. Anyway, and then of course I'll stay on the brush. I appreciate it.
Supervisor Bone.
Thank you so much for all of the speed limit information.
It's a lot.
Making my way through it, wanna make sure that if I do meet up with a traffic engineer that, you know, I'm well informed based on the information. So thank you. Couple of things, the Forest Service Road up on Brush Mountain, that was remarkable. Was that the Forest Service that actually?
No, we did that.
That's incredible.
We've been in an ongoing kind of discussions with them about stuff. That's a, it's not a V dot road, but it's on D dot right of way. We're trying to work through that so they can maintain it. It's not in the V dot secondary system. So as that goes, the board really has no control over that through V dot. It may have through other means, Forest Service. It's not something that you could put secondary road six-year plan money on. I can get around using maintenance money because it is technically still on the right of way. We're trying to work it out so that it's a Forest Service Road. V dot views it as merely like an entrance, like anybody has an entrance onto a state road. And eventually at some point, your entrance crosses onto V dot right of way. If you don't make, can't maintain every entrance onto V dot right of way. This is a little different and we understand that. So we're trying to work with that.
It just so happens that I've been hiking or walking on the Poverty Creek trails pretty much most weekends. And so the first weekend when all that gravel was, you know, it was quite the interesting ride down and up. And then as the gravel gets consumed by the mud and dirt, you know, it's, it's like a paved road. But eventually I suspect it'll get pretty muddy, right?
Yes, it will.
Yeah. So will you gravel it again?
It'll take ongoing maintenance. We're hoping to have the issue resolved before we have to do anything else. It's just, you know, everything we do is something we're not doing somewhere else. We'd rather not take county money that should go to other gravel roads in the county and use it on a Forest Service road.
But it was lovely how much wider it got too. You guys did amazing work. The Lester's Gate Tunnel, I really appreciate the signage that you all had. It said, "You may wait for a very long time." And I was on that road waiting for not too long a time. So that was very helpful. I appreciate that. And then I know I've told you about Woodland Hills paving at the end of the streets. I think I told you about one end of the street, but both ends of the street have, need to be repaved. And then the, the one end of the street that's closest to the country club. The shoulder seems to drop off pretty quickly. And I, I don't know what your terms and conditions are for shoulders, but it might be worth checking out. And that's it. Thank you.
Supervisor Demons.
Thank you for being here, Mr. Clark. I'm sure the soft shoulders on four six between South Gate and Price's Ford on both sides are on the list. I'm worried, thinking of plowing, we'll just dig up those shoulders and eventually cars will fall off.
Yeah, we're gonna try to get this, while the asphalt pans are still.
Thank you. I appreciate that.
Supervisor King.
Just two things. Earlier about Route eight, Children's Road right there in Allen's. Check into that, see what we could do to make it a lot safer.
Now, because of the accident that occurred there a couple weeks ago. They'll be doing a complete look at that intersection.
There's several cars. I don't know if they can't see the stop sign or what. Several cars went through. Then ran it Route eight in Meta Creek. But there, where you come off Route eight to Meta Creek, that house right there. He has a tree right there, but it's been hit so many times, it's about dead now. And maybe looking at, see what we could do to more safety for his house.
I appreciate it. We've, we've received calls and it's just a crazy intersection. Those legs coming in there, right there at the, between the animal hospital.
We got people coming out dirty.
Yep.
Flowing, Chris Burton coming off.
That left turn on Meta Creek is a very popular movement, especially in the mornings.
I do appreciate it.
Supervisor Blunt.
Thank you, Mr. Clark, for the update. Some of the questions, you already told me you're still working on the speed study for Route one fourteen. And you already mentioned brush, cutting brush on Route one fourteen. So I appreciate you continue to work on those items. And the off exit one fourteen, the two turn lanes that are now expanded, thank you for that. That was very needed so that traffic's not, that'll help alleviate traffic being backed up off that exit onto the interstate. So we greatly appreciate that. Good job with that. Thank you, sir.
And the other thing, David, that I got is now you had announced that, that that short stretch of Bonner's Run was gonna be worked on. Has that started or completed or? Haven't been up there in a while.
I think it should be done. We did a revenue sharing project. I haven't been out there to see the final product. You should have. I'll check tomorrow.
I was just curious.
Yeah, and I should be. Actually, there's a short piece of service street road out there between some gravel sections.
All right. Any follow-up? Hearing none? Thank you very much.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
All right, first up, public hearing. Islamic Center of Blacksburg request for tax exemption. Do you have a representative from the group here this evening that's requesting this tax exemption? All right, any follow-up? Hearing none? Thank you very much.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
All right, first up, public hearing. Islamic Center of Blacksburg request for tax exemption. Is there a representative?
We have a representative from the group here this evening that's requesting this tax exemption. You're in the lobby and want to come forward. Ask that you give an overview of your request this evening.
Sure. So the Islamic Center of Blacksburg oversees the land at one fifteen South Park Drive. There is a project that is planned to establish that piece of land. We used to have another, or actually do our operations from a different place. It's actually new to that place at one oh six South Park Drive. And we had to leave that place. We own this property maybe since two thousand and eight or two thousand and nine. That property actually under that trust ownership of Nate's. But we are the sole proprietor, sole beneficiary of that piece of land. We have actually went into a project, like we have done quite some effort in there. Raising some fund to establish a permanent property at that place as a mosque. That effort was actually hindered when the COVID hit. Because we, the effort to collect more funds has been a little bit hard at that time. So we have been paying regularly the tax on this land. But actually, we would like to have tax exempt that would help us at least to cut some of the expenses towards the funding the project.
You have any questions?
that short stretch of boner's run was going to be worked on. Is, is that started or completed or? Haven't been up there in a while.
I think it should be done. We, we did a revenue sharing project. I haven't been out there to see the final products. You should have. I'll check tomorrow.
I was just curious.
Yeah. Actually, there's a short piece of certain street road out there between some gravel sections.
All right. Any follow up? Hearing none. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. All right. First up, a public hearing. Islamic Center of Blacksburg request for tax exemption. Sir, represent.
We have a representative from the group here this evening that's requesting this tax exemption. You're in the lobby and want to come forward. Ask that you give an overview of your request this evening.
Sure. Uh, so the Islamic Center of Blacksburg oversees the land at 115 South Park Drive. There is a project that is planned to, uh, to establish, to establish that piece of land. We used to have another, uh, or actually do our exercise, our operations from a different place. It's actually new to that place at, at 106 South Park Drive. And, uh, we had to leave that place. Uh, we own this property maybe since 2008 or 2009. That property actually under that trust ownership of Nate's. Uh, but we are the sole proprietor, sole beneficiary of that piece of land. We have actually went into a project like we have done, uh, quite some effort in there, raising some fund to establish a permanent property at that place as a mosque. That effort, uh, was actually hindered when the COVID hit because we, uh, the effort to collect more funds has been a little bit hard at that time. So, uh, we have been paying regularly the, the tax on this plan, but actually, uh, we would like to have tax exempt that would help us, at least to cut some of the expenses towards the funding the project.
Do you have any questions? Oh, wait. Supervisor.
Can you give some landmarks of where that property is near?
It is, you know, Mary, Mary Courtyard. It's just right, right next to it.
Oh, right next to it or behind it?
I do know, actually next to it. So, uh, like walking across the main street, the south main street in Blacksburg where Mary Courtyard is. If we are going towards Blacksburg, it would be just right after the, the traffic lights.
So you take a right. And so you take a left at one of the, at the traffic light?
You take, you take a right. If you, if you're going directly from, uh, along the south main towards Christiansburg, you take a right at, at the traffic light, the land will be on the left.
Right there on the corner, right?
Yes, exactly. In the corner.
Like where all the political signs are?
Uh, I'm not totally sure, but probably yes.
Supervisor.
I don't have any questions. Thank you for coming tonight to give us more information.
Thank you.
Supervisor Kane.
Have no question. Thank you for coming.
Supervisor.
Uh, when do you think that you all will, um, start building?
Well, we actually had plans that was approved by the town of Blacksburg, uh, by maybe, uh, early 2020. But the plans were approved, but we, at that time, we didn't have all the fun that we need to start the, the construction. So it was kind of risky for us to start the construction without having enough fun. So we had to put it on hold, uh, from now. Uh, we are trying to, I mean, to revive the project and start collecting the funds till things are not, uh, working. Uh, especially now the, uh, businesses have still struggling a little bit. So we actually relied also on some of the donations of the local, locals of the area. So still, I mean, we're trying to work it out. So, uh, I, I can't give you like a specific date, but we are working on it.
Other questions?
Supervisor Shepherd. Location. She, she worded it better than I could. I didn't really know how to say, where is it at? That's all I have. All right. Well, thank you very much, sir. We appreciate you coming in.
Thank you.
Now, this is a public hearing, so if there's anyone else that would like to come up and speak on this particular issue, uh, they are welcome to come up. Do ahead, just give your name and whether you're a resident of Montgomery County and have four minutes. Need to have a camera for the.
Yeah. How do we know if somebody's coming from outside?
You can always move forward if somebody comes in, pause and read it.
Yeah, I think that's what. All right. We'll see and no one come forward. We'll, uh, go ahead and, uh, close that public hearing. Next, we have public address. The board supervisors allows citizens to present comments on issues deserving their attention during the public address at each meeting. If you wish to speak, please observe the policy below regarding public address and the presentation of visuals. Public address signup sheet will be available and I think we have several people that are signed up. Following, uh, the names on the signup sheet, other speakers will be allowed. So if you haven't signed up, we will make allowance for that. Each speaker has four minutes, whether speaking as an individual or representative. All comments must be directed to the chair and other supervisors from the speaker's lectern at the front of the room. Please begin by state stating your name and whether you're a resident of Montgomery County. Debate between speakers and members of the audience will not be allowed. Speakers may leave any written statements and or comments to the supervisors with the board clerk. Speakers will be judged out of order should the speaker engage in personal attacks, use profanity or abusive language, debate with the audience and not address the supervisors. Accepted etiquette is not to applaud or make loud responses.
I can make one comment as well. Because we're in our temporary facility over here, this is my timer this evening. So once your four minutes is up, I'll hold up my hand to let you know your four minutes is up and that's your signal to please stop. Sure. Our list this evening, our first speaker is Betty Thomas.
Mr. Chairman, my name is Betty and I'm a transgender ten year old. You heard speak at the school board meeting in August. And I'm the, and I am from Montgomery County. What you said about last four supervisors meeting was wrong. And when Ms. Bond said was correct. Trans and non-binary people have been trapped in the closet for too long. So long in fact, I had to wait three years before I finally knew who I was. You said I watched a ten year old. I apologize if you're watching us, but I don't know what you identify as. But having a problem with her gender and she's ten years old, ten years old. Gender dysphoria is a rare thing, used to be, but now it's become an issue. Mr. Chairman, I want to correct your misunderstandings. I stated my gender when I spoke at the school board meeting. I am gender fluid, non-binary and transgender. You got my pronouns wrong. I use easier pronouns, not she/her pronouns. I am not having a problem with my gender. As you can tell, I know who I am. It sounds like you are the one having a problem with my gender. Gender dysphoria is not becoming an issue. It's just for common now for people to be honest about who they are. It does not matter that I am ten years old and it wouldn't matter if I were three years old. Suggesting that I'm incapable of knowing myself shows a lack of understanding and compassion. But what really caught my attention was when you said that the school is having to come up with different ways to accommodate these people. Why does this bother you? Is it hurting you? Do you think other children shouldn't have to go to school with these people? You said all the studies I ran on it, it's never a good outcome. You have been going to the wrong sources. If you used a good source, you would see that people like me are everywhere in the world. In some cultures, it is normal for people like me to be respected and trans people are often successful. In Montgomery County public schools, there are lots of people like me. I'm not the only one who had to stay in the closet for too long. And when you said those things, you not only hurt my feelings, but everyone else's in the queer community. Using me the way you did was not okay. Parents do not have the right to take money from public schools to send their kids to private schools just because they're transphobic. Public schools need money for books, teachers, equipment and activities for all students. And you don't have the right to use my identity to hurt my school. Thanks to Virginia government and the school board, at my school, people use my pronouns correctly instead of misgendering me. I can be honest about who I am at school. I want to thank Ms. Cass, Mr. Tribaka, Ms. Franklin, Ms. Kiran, Ms. Graham, Ms. Valentine, Ms. Greeno, Ms. Nettie Stein, Ms. Shepherd, Mr. Trotter, Mr. Seiya, Councilor Score and my classmates, family and friends. You have all been there for me and have really touched my heart by supporting me. And I also want to thank Ms. Franklin for sharing what it's like to experience segregation. You have helped me decide once and for all that I will stand up for myself and others. Mr. Chairman, at my school, we are taught to listen to what people are saying and to respect people of all different genders, races, religions, abilities and cultures. Our school pledge is to focus on learning, show respect for others, take time to own our actions and emotions and make good choices to take care of ourselves and others. We say it every day. You should learn from our schools instead of working to defund them.
Our next speaker.
Oh, you'll wait. You can wait just a second. I, I would like to make this statement. At our last meeting while discussing school vouchers, I mentioned not by name, a ten year old student spoke at a school board meeting. I realized that school vouchers are a very polarizing topic and should have considered how it might affect the student and the student's family. For this, I apologize for any anguish or anger caused by my words.
All right. Thank you, sir. Our next speaker is Martha Anne Stallings.
Okay, done.
Yes.
Good evening. I am Martha Anne Stallings and I reside at nineteen twenty Cascades Road in Blacksburg, Virginia. Good evening, chairman and other school, um, excuse me, board supervisor members. And I'm sorry, Mary Biggs cannot be here this evening for the death and family. I have been a resident of Montgomery County since nineteen seventy nine. My whole professional career has been in education. Twenty-five years in the MCPS as a substitute first, and then finally a teacher in four different schools. The very first one in the early eighties at Shawsville Middle and High when Virginia East was there. And then after teaching at four different schools, I went to central office and worked for six years. Finally, after that, I ended my career at Virginia Tech, working at T-TAC that serves Montgomery County schools and other school divisions in the area with supportive students with disabilities. So yes, I'm all about education. I currently volunteer in a few capacities that impact our schools. First, I tutor in an after school K five tutoring program at the Adams Park, um, trailer park community on Merrimack Road. Blacksburg Baptist Church rents a trailer and provides volunteer tutors to meet the twenty children at the bus stop. Two afternoons a week, we walk up the hill, we have a snack outside when we can, and then we get caught up on homework and reading and writing, whatever there is to do. Price's Fork Elementary, that's one of the schools where I taught, serves this community and has served these students during the pandemic in ways that you would not believe. But I have personally witnessed they have gone above and beyond as all of our teachers have. They continue to spend hours beyond the typical school day to meet the needs of all the students. I have no doubt that the students in this community receive equal treatment as we all would hope. I also serve on the NRCC Education Foundation Board and I truly do appreciate your support of the ACE program over the last many years. It has made a huge difference for many, many of our MCPS graduates and also homeschool graduates and kids or students, excuse me, who graduated from private schools. I checked with Angie Covey today and she said this year we have nine students who are either homeschool students or private school students. And I, I thought that was great news. Finally, I serve on the NAACP Education Committee and I have been chair of the Dialogue on Race Education Committee, I think for eight years. Anyone, as someone who's very connected to our local school division, I truly cannot support the legislative priority that would provide vouchers or tax credit to public school students and families who want to attend private schools or be homeschooled. Members of the Dialogue of Race of Montgomery County are committed to the equity and justice in our community. And of course, that includes any matters that affect our local schools. With such vouchers or tax credits, much needed funding and resources have to be taken from our schools. Important resources are what make our schools run on a daily basis from school buses and driver support staff that support students and teachers, cafeteria aides, technology. Did I mention technology? And yes, finally salaries of those who work for our schools, whether it be teachers, paraprofessionals in special education, bus drivers, cafeteria workers and so on. I have to say, I believe Montgomery County Public Schools has worked very hard to manage their funds in order to increase salaries and to attract the best. No longer do we have teachers and educators leaving to go to Salem and Roanoke. Rather, we have people from Roanoke and Salem coming to Montgomery County. However, with decreased funds, how can this continue? How can we attract the best? How can we continue to be the MCPS that serves all students? Yes, even beyond the school day. Am I done? Okay. So think what I said, I did send an email out to folks and I hope you have time to read it. Thank you.
Our next speaker, I'm going to announce the next two. The next speaker is Matthew Fentress. And after Mr. Fentress will be Barb, oh, excuse me, Bob Arbott. That's, I'll, when you've got, yeah, I'm, I'm going to try to do hand signals to help everybody too. I thought of that as well. When you're down to one minute, I'll do this. All right. When you're done, I'll do that.
I don't have more to cut, but I mean, I cut some of whatever it's. Sorry. Matthew Fentress, resident, resident of Christiansburg, Virginia. I want to first thank board members like Todd King and Ms. Biggs and others for reaching out to educators in the past and listening to our professional concerns. Please continue to reach out to public school employees and matters that concern them, our students and our families that we serve. As a citizen of Montgomery County, a public school teacher, and most importantly, as a father, I was appalled by some of the comments made of the supervisors' meeting that took place a couple of weeks ago on September twenty seventh. Also where the board spoke on a legislative agenda that promoted vouchers and defunding ultimately our schools. All politicians say they support public education. After all, strong public schools are critical for things, uh, crucial for things like well-trained workforce, economic stability and thriving communities, much like Montgomery County. Parents can continue to choose to homeschool or send their kids to private schools as an option for their families, but not at the expense of taxpayers. If vouchers were approved on the state or federal level, their impact would economically devastate the very people you represent. Vouchers pull tax, public tax funds away from public institutions and give taxpayer money to private and businesses. Sometimes vouchers tend to be coupons for the rich and destroy the chance of public schools, the chance of public schools have to provide for our lowest economic families that are struggling. And as a teacher, here's a history lesson on vouchers. School vouchers have a racist history. Over sixty years ago, after the landmark nineteen fifty-four ruling of Brown versus Board of Education, the decision to desegregate America's schools during the segregated Jim Crow era, many government officials hatched schemes to close public schools and provide white students with private school vouchers. Vouchers, much like the ones you mentioned in your legislative agenda. Much of this race-based voucher movement was led by our own governor at the time, Harriet Bird. The movement against integration of public schools was called massive resistance, if you didn't know. This was done during a dark time in America's history. So when you push forward as representatives of Montgomery County, a legislative agenda rooted in racism, you send us back in time instead of moving forward in a positive direction. Trying to see how I can explain this to you. Look at it like this. Would you defund the police? I appreciate a local law enforcement. If I choose to hire private security to protect my family or my home in a different way than what is provided by my county, that is my choice. But it should not come at the cost of local law enforcement's budget or taxpayers. Why would you push forward an agenda to possibly defund our schools or children? Be the patriotic and honorable public servants of Montgomery County and take the time to educate yourself on the history and negative effects of school voucher programs. Thank you.
Next speaker is Bob Arbott. And after Mr. Arbott is Susan Orkow.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Bob Arbott, District D, Reiner. I support the concept of an education bouncer. These times when every issue seems to divide us, this concept could be one to bring us together. We have parents verbally battling each other about what and how their children are taught, often in school board meetings. We have school board members and administration being confronted with more conflict in meetings over these same questions. We have more outside influence in local schools by state and federal entities who think they have paid for that right. In the past year alone, we've seen these issues in school versus virtual learning, asking confusing gender questions and soon the COVID shots for all students. The board of supervisors is faced with the prospect of massive debt for upgrades and replacement to school facilities. For example, Christiansburg High School project, which will soon lead to conflict over local tax increases. Finally, we have the students and teachers caught in the middle. All of this appears to be an escalating spiral with little hope of satisfaction for anyone. All of this appears to be an escalating spiral with little hope of satisfaction for anyone involved. In fact, as best I'm able to find them at least, are Montgomery County spends about thirteen thousand dollars per student per year for around ninety-six hundred students. County's direct share is about seventy-eight hundred, with the rest from federal, state, and who knows what else. But some, but not most, parents might consider alternatives to public school system if it were affordable. Here's an example of the voucher concept. A county could provide a voucher for, say, five thousand dollars per student per year for those dissatisfied with the current environment. Let the local free market create ways to meet their needs. A county saves about twenty-eight hundred a student per year, or about two-point-eight million if a thousand students were to drop out of that and go into other alternatives, understanding that staffing adjustments would have to be made over time. The wins for this: reduce conflict among parents over what and how to educate, reduce conflict and stress for the school board and administration, reduce outside influence on education for parents to choose the voucher, reduce MCPS and Board of Supervisor operating budgets or increase money for other needs, reduce facilities debt demand for the Board of Supervisors, reduce need for local tax increases, increase job choices for any teachers if they happen to be unhappy, and most of all, students are removed from this conflict of opinion, perspective, politics, and worldview. It's a little more difficult to figure out who loses in this, but... Am I done?
One minute.
Thank you. This idea is nothing more than a concept, not a plan, just a citizen's simplistic view. I thank you for your consideration. And obviously, I'm either missing something or my business background tells me that what I've heard so far is inaccurate. I don't understand how we can reduce the cost and actually be withdrawing money from the school system since we're reducing, not reducing, the cost per student that's provided. That's a little confusing to me, but I'd like to leave this with clerk, who's that?
Our next speaker is Susan Morikawa and after Ms. Morikawa is Andy Morikawa.
Good evening, I'm Susan Morikawa and I live in Blacksburg. And I'm here to speak to the issue of tax credits or vouchers to subsidize students to attend private schools. We are all experiencing a time of confusion and challenge. There's a lot of upset to go around. Our public schools are a place where the upset can land because they are so central to the functioning of our community. The pandemic has really shown us that. Public education is one of the great responsibilities of human community. We have to pool our resources to make it happen. Taxes are the way we, as a society, take on great jobs. We have an educational system that makes great efforts to see students as the individuals they are and to meet their individual needs. Also, public schools are never funded sufficiently to accomplish what is required and expected. Classroom teachers bear the weight of all that expectation as they work to nurture and teach all their students. Tax credits and vouchers take away from public funding of schools at a time when greater funding is needed. It's a move in the direction of a less equitable school system. It might sue the upset of a few families, but it diminishes the opportunities for our children and our community. We must find solutions that draw on our different ways of seeing the world. We need to work together if we're going to make things more fair for all of our students. And before I finish, I want to share with you something I saw yesterday that struck a chord with me. It said, "It will be a great day when our schools get all the money they need and the politicians have to sell chocolate to support their campaigns."
Our next speaker is Andy Morikawa and after Andy is Ms. Penny Franklin.
Thank you. Good evening. I'm Andy Morikawa. I reside in Blacksburg, Virginia. I've been a Montgomery County community member since nineteen seventy-nine. I am the Emeritus Executive Director of the Community Foundation and a Senior Fellow at the Virginia Tech Institute for Policy and Governance. My opinions in these remarks are solely my own. My three children and three grandchildren all have attended Montgomery County public schools, three generations of my family, soon to be four generations, I'm about to become a great-grandfather, live, attend school, work, and do volunteer service in Montgomery County. My aim tonight is to speak in opposition to your including the use of public funding to support vouchers or tax credits in your legislative priorities. My purpose in speaking is to underscore, in my opinion, the urgent need we have as Montgomery County community to build our capacity, our willingness, to work together across differences. We need to demonstrate leadership for a community that works for us all, a leadership of courage and resolve to achieve the American dream of liberty and justice for all. In my opinion, vouchers and tax credits to private schools divert taxpayer dollars from their intended purpose, to educate all, to make a decent education available to everyone regardless. This transfer of public monies to private interests challenges the public trust because private schools are not required to report fully how they spend funds. Private schools do not provide transparency regarding the curricular content or students' achievement levels. This lack of accountability and transparency for the use of taxpayer dollars does not square with standards of responsible stewardship. Private schools can historically have proven that they deny admissions to some students based on their race, sexual orientation, or religious beliefs. In sharp contrast, students in public educational institutions are protected under federal programs such as Title VI and Title IX. Private schools may also deny admission to students with disabilities who require more expensive support services. Students with disabilities in public schools are protected under state and federal law to get a free education and one that provides an environment conducive to their learning. Taking money away from public schools may create undue hardships for many families. The protections provided to them in public schools are not assumed, are not assured in private schools since many do not receive federal funding and are exempt therefore from federal law. Virginia's recent history involves the shameful use of vouchers and tuition credits. In the late fifties and early sixties, Virginia and six other states across the South enacted tuition tax credits to subsidize families fleeing integrating public schools. Such policies devastated African-American students' education. Why do this now? Why include such a divisive issue in our legislative priorities? For what purpose? In this moment of pandemic, of uncertainty, and of divide, what we need most is a call for community for a pulling together to meet the myriad challenges confronting us all. Let us honor differences as a transformative asset. Rather than take away from already insufficient funding for public education, invest instead in a rich education that helps us face our prejudices and racism such that we may learn how to be and become a community that works for us all, an education that teaches us how to be more fully human. I ask that the Montgomery Board of Supervisors remove the legislative priority concerning school vouchers and tax credits. Citizens of Montgomery County deserve much better than this. We must protect the civil rights of all. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Penny Franklin and after Ms. Franklin is Glenn Chilcot.
Good evening, Penny Franklin, Christiansburg. So, I want to make it really, really clear that I am here as a citizen, a lifelong citizen of Montgomery County. All the wonderful speakers that have been before me have all had nice written-out things to speak about. I don't work that way. So, you're gonna get what I'm feeling from my heart, from my head, and what I've experienced in life. There was someone who told me, when they watched the tape from the meeting last on September twenty-seventh, that they thought about me and they said, "I bet you Penny's head is exploding." Not only did my head explode, but my heart exploded, exploded and sank. To think that the comments that came from this board were talking about the citizens of Montgomery County, especially one child. I lived through segregation. I understand exactly what it feels like to be one of those people who you don't want your children to be in school with. I've heard stories from folks in other parts of this state who talked about when the school systems went down, they just closed because people fled, because they didn't want to be with those people. We're hearing the same thing here. I don't understand how you could possibly say that you support public education when what you're proposing is to pull funds away from public education. The nonsense about, well, you build smaller schools and you have less money, so you won't have, you won't really need it, so that is absolutely ludicrous. Because sooner or later, just like it happened through integration, everybody came back. And we still go together, go to school together. You didn't want us there in the first place. Some people still don't want us there. And what I see happening here is some of the same stuff. You don't want other people there. You don't want to hear the true history of this country and slavery and how despicable it was and all the plots and laws and everything that were passed to make sure that black people and other people are not allowed to achieve the American dream or even be respected as decent people. Saying my head exploded, that puts it mildly. I was actually traveling when I received a message talking about what had occurred and the link to it. I'm glad I did not open that up on the plane. I am so glad I did not because it would have been very hard for me to maintain myself in that closed space. What you are proposing is out and out, as far as I'm concerned, sinful in moral, to take the opportunities out of public schools for folks who do not have the funds to be able to go to private schools with your little help. Because if you follow the money, I guarantee you, it will be just like our prison system that's been built so that private owners can lock up people and get the funds and not treat people decently. And that's what will happen if you take funds away from public education. You take away opportunities from every child in this county to be able to get a decent education and to learn how to live with people who are those people. Well, the last time I checked, we are all human and as humans, we need to be respecting, loving, and learning how we live together in this community. Because if not, this community will fail. I don't want this community to look like Sugar Land, Texas, where it's very, very clear, we don't want those people here and we don't want to respect those people. Thank you.
Next speaker is Glenn Chilcot and after Mr. Chilcot is Morning Reed.
Good evening. Chair Fidzikowski and members of the board. My name is Glenn Chilcot and I live in Blacksburg and I'm the President of the Montgomery County Education Association. I am here this evening to address the topic of vouchers, which several members of this board would like to include on Montgomery County's legislative agenda. I want to first address the notion of parent choice. Parents do have a choice when it comes to schools. They vote for their school board members, they vote for their legislators, they vote for their Board of Supervisors who allocate funds and direct policy for public education. Unfortunately, school funding is partly based on enrollment and vouchers would decrease already low funding and hurt those families in public schools. This means public schools would have less access to adequately resourced libraries, musical instruments, science equipment, technology, textbooks, and after-school programs. I keep hearing that families who cannot afford private schools deserve the right to move their tax dollars to private or homeschools to make things fair. This is flawed thinking. Firstly, our public schools are fantastic. Secondly, taking tax dollars away from public schools undermines a core American democratic principle, a free education for all. And thirdly, private schools aren't held accountable. If tax dollars are going there, the teachers that teach in that building need to be held accountable, just like I am. Moreover, there is zero statistical significance that voucher programs improve the overall student success and some programs have even shown to have a negative effect on students receiving those vouchers. Furthermore, vouchers have been shown to not support students with disabilities, they fail to protect the human and civil rights of our students, and they exacerbate segregation. The issue of school vouchers is generally rooted in value-based decisions and none of that is reflected in the research of academic achievement. The question then remains, do we allocate tax dollars on one particular set of values? One, that's not America. As you know, the discussion of vouchers has become heated when there has been cultural shifts regarding who is allowed in our neighborhoods and who directs the decisions on curriculum. Instead of focusing on vouchers, let's focus on small class sizes, fully funding the arts and programs that provide training for preparation for careers for today and tomorrow, as well as providing a professional wage to create more competition for highly qualified educators in our schools. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Morning Reed and after Mr. Reed is Deborah Trice.
Good evening, I'm Morning Reed. I live in Blacksburg, Virginia, therefore I'm living in Montgomery County. Many of us vehemently disagree with your proposal to take public funding and support vouchers and tax credits to be used in private schools. There are many problems with this idea and I'm just going to list a few. First, it facilitates discrimination. How so? While parents have the right to choose where they will send their children, scarce public funds should not be taken to facilitate that process because these schools do not have to abide by all federal, state, and local laws. They are kind of free to discriminate. For example, private schools can deny admission to individuals because of their race, their sexual orientation, or their religious beliefs. Also, and this is a double point here, students with disabilities can be refused admission to many of these private schools. And you must understand that this is a key issue here in this whole debate because it takes more funds to educate students with disabilities. Private schools get by because they don't have to accept them. They're allowed to discriminate. Another reason that this is a bad idea is the issue of accountability and transparency. There's a lot of discussion about people disrespected at public schools, but private schools do not have to say what they teach. They can get public funds but not be accountable for what they teach. Public schools do. Also, they, private schools are not accountable for the funds they use that comes from the public tail. They get public funds, yet they do not have to respond to the public. They get public funds, yet they do not have to respond to the public by being transparent with where the money went. So that's another problem. Our local public schools need additional resources so that all of our children can be educated. So we should not be taking money out of the education pot, which would hurt that effort. And it has been mentioned twice this evening already, one of the main things I wanted to talk about this evening, and that is the shameful history in Virginia, which was one of the leading of these seven states that decided to have this massive resistance to school integration. And to facilitate that, Virginia provided vouchers and tax credit to white families who were fleeing school integration. That is problematic. And it's a history we should not try to repeat. And needless to say, as my colleague earlier said, if this was devastating to African-American students in this state, to the extent that there are people in this state who don't have high school diplomas because of that. Furthermore, let's be clear. Voucher programs do not work. Research in Ohio, Louisiana, Indiana, and the District of Columbia has shown that students who use vouchers to go to private schools fall behind students in public schools. They do not work. There it is. Is my time up? Oh, okay. So the bottom line is, we should not be taking scarce public funds for voucher programs that lack accountability and do not work at most public schools. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Deborah Travis. After Ms. Travis is Anna Dalton.
Good afternoon, board members. My name is Deborah Travis. I'm a resident of the town of Christiansburg, have resided here for over twenty-six years. I have three children who attended and graduated from the public school system here in Montgomery County. I'm also the president of Montgomery County Rapid City Floor County branch of the NAACP, and I'm here to speak on their behalf tonight. The mission of the NAACP is to ensure the political, educational, social, and economic equality of all citizens. Under our educational focus, we try to eliminate or work towards eliminating inequities and discrimination in all school systems and provide a welcome and safe environment for all of our students to learn, regardless of their race, their sex, gender identity, sexual orientation, religious beliefs, or disability status. Our branch of the NAACP is very concerned about the proposed action to include as a legislative priority to use public funding to support vouchers or tax credits to private schools because we feel this action is not in line in promoting equity for all students. History of the private school system, voucher system in many states, including Virginia, and especially Prince Edward County, my hometown, demonstrates promotion of inequity in education and fails to provide civil rights protections that students have in public school systems. While we believe that parents should have the right to choose where they send their children, taking public funding from public schools result in devastating results for most students, especially low-income and minorities. We also do not support using public funds to support attendance at private schools because many do not provide the needed civil rights protections under law due to the fact that many private schools are exempt from federal laws because they do not receive funding from the federal government. An example of this is that private schools can deny admission of some students, which may be based on their race, sexual orientation, or religious beliefs. Students in public educational institutions are protected under federal programs such as Title VI and Title IX. Students can be expelled from private schools in many situations as students and parents have limited recourse if they feel they are discriminated against. Some states have used vouchers to fund private schools to purposely avoid integrating schools, as we've heard previously tonight. We advocate for our students to experience the benefits of diversity and embrace the differences and experiences of all so that we can prepare them for real life. Students with disabilities in public schools are protected under state and federal law to get a free education and one that provides an environment conducive to learning. Taking money from public schools may create undue hardships for many families, and it will not allow those students with special needs to have the proper and needed programs geared to their educational development, such as assessments and proper resources. The protections provided to them in public schools are not assured in private schools since many, again, do not receive federal funding, so therefore they are exempt from federal law. Private schools do not have the same accountability as public schools, and there is no solid evidence or research that shows that students result in better achievement in the private school setting. Our local school system here needs additional funding, and we need it now, and we need to improve the educational needs of all children. Reducing public funding may lead to many inequities in the educational system, and this just cannot be accepted. We, as a branch of the NAACP, ask you to consider what is really needed in this county and to promote unity and provide an equitable, attainable quality education for all of our students. Please remove, as your legislative priority, private school vouchers and tax credits. Let's fight for the civil rights of all. Thank you.
Next speaker is Anna Dalton, and after Ms. Dalton will be Sue Cass.
Good evening. Bear with me. I have trouble talking sometimes. I'm here because I want to support Debbie Travis. She's a very special person, and I wanted to support other folks that I know in my community. I'm a member. I live in Christiansburg. I've been here since seventy-nine. Sent my boys through Price's Fork Middle School, you know, the Blacksburg Middle School, Blacksburg High School, and on through that other college there, too. And I've been an active member of the community, worked for the county for almost thirty-four years. Been involved in my community, been involved in my church. And I'm sorry, one hour and twenty-seven minutes into your meeting last time, I didn't know what to think. I just knew that my heart was hurt for people that I know that don't look like me, that don't act like me, but are part of our, they're the children in our schools and in our communities. It's varied and different. Montgomery County schools have been noted, and our community's been noted, for its inclusion. It has been commended for that. And those elements of discussion that came out did not show me what I know to be the kindness in people's hearts. Again, it hurt my heart because I could see all these faces and I could see these children that I have bumped into in life that are very different from me. Yes, what do I have? I have a white mind. I grew up in a world where I didn't know things. In fact, I didn't start knowing many things till I was in my, I learned when I was in my twenties. I learned when I was in my fifties. And now, but in the seventies, and I'm still learning. But again, I'm learning by meeting people and connecting with them, supporting them, supporting their children, supporting the families, supporting the parents. The school voucher system and tax credit brought out things that I don't want to see in my county. Thank you.
Next speaker is Sue Cass, and after Ms. Cass will be Shannon Rutter.
Sorry. Chairman and members of the board, thank you for allowing me to speak with you this evening. My name is Sue Cass. I am a resident of Blacksburg. I am a former teacher in Montgomery County. I am also a member of our board, but I'm here to speak as a former teacher, as a resident of our county, and as a concerned citizen. It's hard to be as eloquent as Ms. Franklin and Betty and Dr. Morikawa and Ms. Travis and all the others, so I'm going to keep my remarks short and to the point. First of all, I want to tell you how shocking it was to hear you speak about one of our students in a public meeting. I know Betty. She's her twin sister and brother, and her parents. They are some of the most amazing people I've met while I've lived here in Blacksburg. I can't even tell you what a wonderful, loving family they are. And I will tell you that every word you heard this evening, Betty wrote. None of that was said by her parents. Those were all her words, because that's how Zee feels. Second, you're putting such a critical and divisive topic onto your legislative agenda without talking to the school board, and that's concerning. And you mentioned in your meeting that you've talked to so many people. How many people have you spoken to? Twenty, thirty, forty? And we get emails all the time with the school board, and you get maybe a hundred on a really divisive topic, maybe a little bit more each person. But we have ten thousand students in our school district, and we have to represent all of those students, not just those whose parents are angry about something. And what are the issues that are forcing our parents to feel that they need to pull their children from our school and go to a private school? Race, gender differences, CRT. You mentioned CRT in your meeting. We do not teach CRT. If you say that we're teaching CRT, you do not know what CRT is. CRT is a college-level academic topic. We're not teaching CRT. What are we teaching our students? The truth. That's what we teach them, the truth and the history of our country. And I was a history teacher. I know that. And other issues, mask wearing, vaccinations, these are the issues that seem to be what parents want to remove their children from our schools for. And it's definitely not the quality of the education, because we are one of the best school systems in this country. And our school board may seem divided at times, and we disagree on things, but there's something all of us agree on. Our students are the most important individuals in all these decisions we make. And what are we saying to those students who are fighting to pull them from our schools? Students learn from the adults around them. And in our schools, they are surrounded by people who teach them. To quote Betty, and I apologize Betty for stealing her words, "We are taught to listen to what people are saying and to respect people of all genders, races, religions, abilities, and cultures. Our school pledge is to focus on learning, show respect for others, take time to own our own actions and emotions, and make good choices to care for ourselves and others." Zee said that, they say that every day. I think that is something that everyone in this room needs to really seriously think about because you are the adults in the room, and what you do and the decisions you make will affect our students in the future. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Shannon Rutter. After Shannon is Matt Trumbo Teal, I believe.
There have been many eloquent speakers, and I'm going to try and keep this very brief. I sent an email to each of you, and I'll just read a tiny bit and then make a few more comments. The most alarming part of this discussion about school vouchers is the publication of education is the foundation of democracy. For this very reason, all taxpayers, whether they have school-aged children or not, contribute to public education. Acknowledging differences and discussing differences is exactly what you do in these board meetings. I strongly believe that teaching children, they only need to interact with people who believe exactly the way they do on every issue, or the way their parents believe on every issue, absolutely undermines the value and responsibility of living in a democracy. That seems to be the lesson that some of these parents will be teaching their children when they demand vouchers because they disagree with the content of the school curriculum. And apparently, there are people who believe that it is acceptable to have, in effect, segregated schools based on parents' beliefs. I think the board of supervisors members need to think long and hard about what it means for democracy if children are taught they should never need to interact with anyone they disagree with. I also just want to add that your governing body overseeing the funding for education for all children in Montgomery County, you have the responsibility to see that the teachers are there, they have the resources they need. You have to, they need the money for the buildings and up-to-date equipment. You have to ensure the schools are heated, the buses run, the teachers, administrators, custodial cafeteria staff, buses, bus drivers, for all students. Bellevue Elementary, Falling Branch, Christiansburg Middle School, Auburn High School, there are twenty schools, all students. As an elected official of Montgomery County, I expect you to look at our individual schools, our individual people, and do the best for them. I don't want to think that you'll be sidetracked by what someone heard might have happened somewhere we're not even sure of. We could make ourselves dizzy thinking about the what-ifs we see on social media in this polarized time. I've spent enough time around schools and students to know that teaching is one of the most important and difficult jobs there is. I have huge respect for teachers and for the dedication and energy they give to ensure students don't just learn facts, but they grow into thinking individuals. Teachers know better than anyone that each child is an individual, and they would grow up to be an adult member of the community. Our schools are already pressed for money, and I think it is irresponsible of the board to siphon money away from students counting on you to support their schools. And I want to say, I really like that pledge the students say. I hadn't heard that before, but it's great. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Matt Trumbo Teal, and after Matt is Roger Dempsey.
Hello, yes, I'm Matt Trumbo Teal. I am a resident of Blacksburg. I went to Price's Fork Elementary, the old one, before it got rebuilt. I went to Blacksburg Middle School, the old one, before it got rebuilt. And I went to Blacksburg High School, the old one, before it got rebuilt. I wanted to get up in front of you, and, well, I should also add that then I went to the University of Virginia. Sorry for everyone who's a tech fan. And then I went to Columbia, and I got a doctorate from Columbia University. I can rattle off the names of a dozen people that I knew who went to Blacksburg High School, who went to top-notch schools and got doctorates. And I want to take a moment to thank all the teachers, all of the administrators, all the students and the parents who helped contribute to that excellent education, that world-class education that I got. And I want to stress how important it is that we make sure that education is accessible to everyone, to everyone in Montgomery County. I was appalled to see that we have government representatives here contributing to a culture of intolerance that makes certain people feel like they're unwelcome in our public schools. Supporting parents who want to pull their children out of our public schools simply because they don't want their children to have to respect someone else's identity and their pronouns. It's unacceptable. And to those students, those trans students, I want to make sure that they understand that there is a place where they're going to be valued, where they're going to be supported, where they're going to be encouraged. It's right here, because we're going to stand up for them. Then I also wanted to share a little bit about my experience going to Montgomery County Public Schools. I met a lot of people in school who had different religious backgrounds, who came from different political views, political backgrounds. They had different races, different ethnicities. And we might not have always gotten along, we might not have always been friendly, but there's a bond there. If I meet them in the street, there's warmth, right? If I meet someone who went to Price's Fork Elementary, there's warmth there, because we are alumni of the same school, same for Blacksburg High School. That lasts for your whole life. There's a social bond that that creates. And I worry what happens when we have vouchers, school vouchers, where we have a conservative school system here and a progressive school system here, and those children never learn how to communicate with each other. They don't have their shared memories, they don't have that shared childhood. They're not able to speak with each other. We already live in a very divided country. And having separate school systems for people with separate values and encouraging that with school vouchers is going to make those divisions permanent and much deeper. The last thing I wanted to say is that I worry about the precedent that school vouchers sets for other schools, for other government services. If you can say, "I don't agree with what the school system is doing. I think I should be able to take my tax money and put that into private schools." Where does that stop? Can I go to the public library and say, "I don't like the books that you have in your library. I don't, I'm not going to go to the library. I think you should give me a voucher, and I'm going to take that and I'm going to put it into a private library." Or can I go to the public pools and say, "Maybe there's a transgender bathroom, and I don't support that. So I think you should give me a voucher, and I'm going to go put that into a private school system." Where does it end? What kind of a precedent does this set for government services? It's not an à la carte thing where you get to pick and choose what you pay for with your taxes. You buy into all of it at once, and we choose by voting, by electing our Board of Supervisors and our other representatives. So thank you for listening.
Last speaker that we have signed up to speak is Roger Vintaser. And after that, I would ask if there's anyone in the room or also in the lobby that has not signed up to speak, they will stand near the deputy at the back of the door. I'll try to recognize each one as they come forward. Roger Vintaser. Doesn't appear to be coming forward. At this point, I would ask if you did not sign up. Sorry, she's actually going to speak as my proxy.
Yeah, I didn't sign up. When you sign up?
No, you're the, I see the last name on the list, so you're the first one to speak. It's not on the list, but please state your name and address, and you have four minutes.
Okay, my name is Joanne Price, 1405 Merrimack Road, Blacksburg, Virginia. And I have one thing to say, and that is that as taxpayers, we have a right to decide exactly what we want to do with our money and where we want to send our kids to school. That is our right. Public schools were designed by the founding fathers to promote education. The education that was being promoted, that they wanted promoted, were the values of the nation, and they were based on Christian Judeo principles. Our public schools have gotten away from that. And so parents who disagree with what's being taught in public schools have a right to send their kids where they want to send their kids, to be educated. Their tax dollars should also go to promote those values that they raised their kids in at home. Now, those people that want to continue to send their kids to public schools, then their tax dollars go to the public schools. That is fair and that is equitable. What I'm here to say is that there are precedents across this country right now. He was talking about, the other gentleman was talking about a precedent. Johnston County, North Carolina, schools, they went to the Board of Supervisors. A group of parents went to the Board of Supervisors. And the Board of Supervisors said, "We're going to withhold funding to the schools. If you teach CRT, transgenderism, allow that. Mask, masking and vaccinations, because we don't agree with that. We're going to demand that you fire teachers." But do that. And guess what? It changed. The Board of Supervisors, Republican-led majority, voted, and that was changed. So there is a precedent in the country, and there is a movement afoot of people who realize that this nation was founded on Judeo-Christian principles, and we are going back to that, because people are beginning to stand up and understand their rights and their freedom. And we are calling elected officials to stand by those principles.
Is there anyone else that wants to speak under public address? See, last call.
I'm Roger Vintaser. I live in Christiansburg, Virginia, and I just want to speak that I am for the vouchers. I believe my child, I should get to decide what kind of education I want for, and my tax dollars should go towards the education that I would like for my child. I'm just going to keep it short, so I'm done.
I am Kelsey Wingfield. I live in Christiansburg, Virginia. I would like to say I am for the voucher system. Our public schools are not a for-profit organization. If a citizen with children is choosing not to utilize them, why should they be paying for them? If they are choosing to homeschool or private school their children, they should not have to put funding into public schools.
Don't see anyone else coming forward, Mr. Chair, so.
All right, seeing no one coming forward, we're going to go ahead and close public address. Next item is addendum.
Addendum, let's see.
We have no addendum. Okay, next item is work session. Is there a motion to go into work session? Yeah, that's probably going to take a little while, isn't it?
Yeah.
All right, we'll hold off on that first. Let's go ahead and take us, take us a 10-minute break, 12 minutes, and be back at 10 till nine.
Had a motion, did I get a second? Okay, we have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion?
Mr. Mott.
I'm Shepherd.
I.
Chairman.
I.
Chair, we'd like to have Willis Secene Courtney Rogers from Davenport and Cotten. Courtney. Spent some time with this folks reviewing the county's. Position and debt capacity. It's a presentation on all things debt related for. Trying to make it a full screen. I don't remember them being able to do that last time.
Well, we'll do the best we can, maybe cut off there at the bottom. Getting everybody to see again, I guess it was about five months ago in May when we first talked about. School financing and so tonight, you know, we're going to take it further. So what we what we thought we'd do today is we're going to go back and we're going to use the scenario we talked about last time. Seventy five million, you might remember is the one that basically set set put us right at our capacity. But then we're going to take it a couple of steps further. Just kind of keep it in mind, what we're doing is we're basically trying to see how much we can issue. Stay within our debt policies, but also what we can where we can stay within our affordability as well. So those are the two things that we're going to use to sort of our governing. Our governing guidelines now. Just give you a quick update interest rate wise, interest rates have started ticking up if you follow the 10 year treasury. It's it's gone up a little bit over the last several weeks. In terms of our market on the taxes M side, since May hadn't moved a whole lot, to be honest, we did update our numbers. Essentially about zero to five basis points in the first eight, 10 years, and then on the longer end of your curve, we've seen a little bit more, maybe in the. The 10 to 20 range, so say on average, maybe about 10 basis points on the whole, which is not a lot, so. The good news is rates at this point still held in there. Now, from the standpoint of affordability, we've split the general government debt and the school debt. This is the general government debt, you can see that you do have some drop down about 900,000 from 21 to 22. Then another almost another 900,000 in 24 and another 25, so there is some availability for capacity in terms of. Of revenues to be able to use to support new debt on the general government side. The issue is on the school side. We're actually interested, the debt service payments actually went up from 21 to 22. And the general government actually, I'll call it donated, used some of their capacity. To to take care of that pop if you would in 20, that went up in 22, but then it comes back down in 23. So the number that we're using as far as dollars available is that 21 budget frozen number of 19 million, six forty two. So you're going to see that in some of the pages as we go forward as far as affordability goes. As far as the capacity side, we look at the two debt ratios. The first is debt service as per chance of assessed value, so total outstanding debt divided by the the assessed value of the county. There's no concern there, you can see that we're well below our 3% bottom target as well as our 4% top target. So we're not even going to show that graphic just to save some time tonight, that's the last time you'll see this graph. The one that really constrains us has for some time, going back to when we did the Auburn and Blackspur high schools. Is the debt service as percentage of expenditures, you can see 21 and 22 were almost at the 12%. As we're talking about issuing debt next year, it really affects 2023, so we're not really worried about 21 and 22, it's 23 and beyond. Because by the time we get to the marketplace, we won't have any debt services. So really, we're talking about that differential between 10 and 20 and 12% as far as the. Capacity that we have on taking on that debt. Understand, there's been some discussion of possibly splitting up the issuance over several years. And so this is a simple scenario, I wanted just to show that that may not be a good idea in a rising interest rate environment. In a declining interest rate environment, might work, but what we did here is we showed in the first column. If you went out and I just picked 75 million for the moment, that's a number we've been talking about. Seventy five million dollars issued all at once in today's market plus 50 basis points. And it's about $94 million of total debt service. If you issued it in three tranches and even amounts, let's just say third, 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 so 25 million times three. And and each was issued one this year, one next year, one the year after. What we did was we did current market plus 50 on the first issue, it's the same as. Doing it all at once, the second issue basically is adding 1%. Because when interest rates start rising, they're going to probably rise. And then we added another 1% for that third year, so basically plus 50 plus 150 plus 250. And what that basically does is it increases to about 103 million. Or about almost $10 million increase in overall debt service just by splitting it up if rates go up. So it's a pretty dramatic number and that also includes extra cost of issuance for issuing it two more times. But the real driver is the interest rates, you can see that from phase one to phase two, it's about a $3 million increase, just that 1%. Differential in interest rates on on basically that $25 million. So. Our recommendation is borrow it all now while rates are low, let's not take a chance on rates going up because it will cost you a lot more. That means we've got to find more dollars to fund those, fund those projects. So back to our scenario, so what again, what we're going to do is we're going to start with the case that you saw last time, which is the 75 million. With updated slightly updated interest rates. And the reason again that we picked that 75 million was that was the number when we did a level debt service structure. That's the number that gets us right up to that 12%. Then what we did was we said, hey, if we did a little bit of structuring, if we did some interest only and we delayed some principal for years. What would that look like? And so we'll talk about that in just a second. What it did is it allowed us a little bit more capacity on that debt service to expenditure ratio. So scenarios two and three, we're going to talk about it in a minute, we increased that 75 million and we also looked at. Basically 20 million that the county needs for county projects, non school projects, if you would. For both scenarios two and three, and then how much more could we add to the schools in order to try to get them a little bit more funding? So looking at again, so we're going to call these scenarios one, two and three, and then an A and a B, A being level debt service. B being a little bit of structure. This is one A, which is the 75 million, what we're going to do is we're going to rather than give you all the. Pages that go to it, some of those are in the back as the appendix, this is really the summary. And essentially, as I talked about earlier, we've got 19.6 million of debt service. That of a budget allocation alone for for debt service. And the red numbers there, the additional funding required is basically the amount over and above that, it's going to be needed by the schools. And I'll scroll up here, so basically the total over that four year period until their debt service declines below that $19 million number. Is about $7 million, but again, as you recall, that case puts us right up against our limit, which means there's no capacity for any county projects. So the only way that we can get there is to do some structure, that scenario one B. Seeing that light blue box where we basically did some structuring first four years. Essentially, we did some interest only and we did some principal structuring. That basically does two things, one, it helps us on that capacity, you'll see in a moment. But it also got that additional funding required down, numbered down quite a bit. We went from basically about 7 million down to only 700,000. When you look at the graphic, you'll notice that there in 2023, we've got a little bit of a gap there, it's only about 11%. So we've got about a 1% gap there that we can use to possibly get some more funding for the county side. So that led us to our scenario two. Scenario two, what we did was. Went up to 20 million for the county projects, as we were told is needed for non non school projects. And then we were able to add 5 million over to the school side, see what that does. Without any structuring, it means that the schools have to come up with about 8.3 million over that four year period. For the county side, because there's about $5 million that is locked in on the budget side. Your debt service is well below that at only 4.3 million with that $20 million issue, there's no additional funding required. So there's no no additional dollars needed in order to take care of that $20 million project, and that's going to be true throughout the rest of the analysis here. What it does do is it does spike a little bit above the 12% ratio. So then what we did was we said, okay, let's go back to the school. 80 million now project loss and we did a little bit of interest only there in the first two years. And we did a little bit of delayed principal in the 25 and 26. Notice the additional funding required was 8 million, now it's only down to 400,000. Very affordable, again, the county project, so far as no additional. And we got our ratios down below the 12%, we do actually have a little bit of gap there. So we said, okay, we've still got a little bit of gap, so let's bump up the schools a little bit more and see if that works. So for scenario three A, we went from 80 million up to 100. 100 million for school projects, 20 million for county projects, see what that looks like. Just do level debt service, the number now goes up to 13. That's additional funding required. Again, nothing on the county side, but it does go through our 12% target, not only in 23, but also. So again, we said, let's look at this. This time we did three years of interest only, and then we did three years of principal structuring. We got the additional funding required down to 1.7 million. I mean, again, needs no additional dollars and we got our debt services expenditures below the 12%. So we have very little capacity there in 23, a little bit in 24, and a little bit more in 25.
But under that scenario, you're funding 20 million for the county and 80 million for schools.
Correct, 100, no 100 million.
Yeah, 100, I'm sorry.
Yes, 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 I was adding, if I had, yes, 100 million there for schools, 20 million for. County projects. So the next couple of pages just gives you the differentials, so you can kind of see it side by side. Look at one A versus one B. This shows you that, yes, it's going to cost an additional 1.9 million to structure. But it means that the additional funding required drops from 7 million only to 700,000. And when you look at the two A and two B. The structure costs 2.3 million, when I say cost, it's basically because we're delaying principles, so it's paying at higher interest rates. It's paying interest for a longer period, so that's really the cost, just additional interest cost. So it's only, it's basically 2.3 million more to do the structure. But it brings the funding required in those first four years down from 8 million down to 400,000. On the 100 million dollar case, it's only 3.7 million dollars more interest that you're paying to structure and principal. But it drops the additional funding required from 13 million to only 1.7. So key takeaways, there is additional capacity to take on some debt. Basically, though, if we're going to do that, to do the amounts we're talking about, we're going to need to do some structuring. Based on the county's debt service budget or the general projects, you don't need to have, you're not going to come up with any additional dollars, the school side would. One of the benefits of structuring is that that's helped us stay within those guidelines, but of course it comes with a cost. So without any structuring, 75 million dollars or higher basis cannot. Mean that that we're going to be going through our debt capacity, going through our ratios. But although that structuring approach does reduce that cash flow impact. And and does help with the ratio, it does increase that total cost, so that is that is one of the downsides. And then despite the total debt service cost compared to level debt service, that approach with the single issuance still is going to be less costly than doing multiples. So again, our recommendation is do it all now, while interest rates are low, take advantage of these low rates, they may not be here forever. It's going to cost a lot more if you come back and try to do it again later. And so finally, again. If there are some additional needs down the road, it's really going to, especially on the school side, open up in 2027 for scenario two B. In 2030, in terms of affordability, in terms of finding extra dollars, it's going to be sometime for. We basically set it up as level debt service going out to 2030 for that 100 million, essentially additional dollars would be needed for any additional projects that may come forward after this. So again, we've got some of the background data that you've seen in the past from us in the appendix. I know I looked at that pretty fast, but I wanted to at least sort of set the set the picture and I'm happy to go back and go through any of the graphics and answer any questions I have. Go around the room.
Thank you, Courtney, this was great.
Quick enough?
That was super fast. Can I have an estimate on how long you have been analyzing this?
We started what, back in March, I think, earlier this year.
Okay, so six months-ish, so you can understand why and now I don't have a lot of questions for you.
Yeah.
Because it was just like this, so.
Right.
I don't have a lot of questions specific to this information because I do need some time to take it in a little bit. At a little bit of a slower pace, I would like to discuss what happens. To our credit score as a county essentially, if we do go over the not to. to our credit score as a county, essentially, if we do go over the not to exceed at twelve percent. And is there any risk factors associated at, at living in that ten to twelve percent?
There's, I'll start at the last question and we're back. So th- there's not, and that's, that ten to twelve percent is, has been, we've had that for years and it's worked well for us. We've been in that.
We've lived there for a while.
There for a while, we, you know, we were able to, to explain to agencies when Blacksburg High School issue happened, that this is emergency and it's going to take us a few years. And they, they were like, great, okay, we, we understand, fine. And we've lived up, you know, that's, so we built some credibility up from that standpoint. Going through it now, is it going to immediately drop our grading? Not necessarily, there's a lot of different things that go into the credit rating. One of the things that helps, would, would in fact help keep us from getting, gained is our fund balance levels are strong. And as long as those stay strong, then, then that, that wouldn't be an issue. Then there's all the other things that go on, like the economy and things like that that enter into it. We had, just as an example, we, we had a, a issuer who frankly deserved an upgrade last year in the middle of the pandemic because of everything else going on, but because of the pandemic, they didn't get it. So it had nothing to do with what they were doing. So I say that because while we, I sit here and say, I don't think so. Something that out of our control could happen, and they may say, we're going to do it anyway. So that, that's the danger.
Well, I appreciate how much effort and, and different scenarios have been put into giving us this information. It, it shows that there are some pathways to do some significant improvements over what we originally thought that we would need to budget for it. So thanks for the homework.
Appreciate it. Credit goes to Alex and Stephen, my, my associate and analyst, who have dug into these numbers and know them by heart now.
Well, thanks to.
I would have had Alex with me today, but he's got a lot going on and we were making changes up to last minute.
Sending us emails at about thirty last night.
Yes.
Well, thanks to them really, and thanks to you for, for always providing such nice, well-rounded financial advice. I really appreciate it. And if I need some nighttime reading, I know where to look. Thank you.
Supervisor King.
I appreciate you coming out, all this hard work put into this. I just got, I need to go over this whole lot, but I just got something that I'd like to figure out. You, you're saying, if we go, the schools are hundred million, the county twenty million.
Yes, sir.
We're going to be maxed out at our level till twenty-seven?
So on this graphic, what you'll see is there is availability from a capacity standpoint, so from the ratios. But what I meant by the twenty twenty-seven, twenty thirty was in terms of needing additional dollars. So that's, the term we use is affordability, meaning if, if, if you want to do another project, you got to find the dollar, on the school side, you got to find the dollars. The county has some dollars available for additional debt. So if you had non-school projects on your side of the ledger, you've got some dollars available. But the schools really are tapped out from a, they have to find additional revenues, which obviously usually come from you guys. So that's what I mean by, by basically tapped out on the affordability side.
So if, if something happened, we'd have to find it somewhere else.
We had to find additional revenues. Yes, sir. So there's a little bit of capacity, meaning we can meet this guideline. So what I mean by that is, if you see, here's twenty-three, we've got a little bit or not much. There's some room here, some room here. And remember, when we started, we, you know, we basically had this gap. So in four years, we'll have that, we probably can still do, you know, I'm not going to say a hundred and twenty million because interest rate's probably higher at that point, so that'll narrow that down. What I would meant was that four years, the debt service for the schools is pretty level up to twenty thirty at a hundred million. So they'll need additional dollars in order to take on any additional debt in the future. And that, I'll go back. I see on this chart here. So there's the nineteen million six. That nineteen million six goes all the way out here to twenty twenty-eight. So there's not, there's a three hundred thousand dollar drop down, the real drop down happens in twenty thirty. We go from nineteen million down to seventeen million, that's about a two million dollar gap. That's the first time there's really real dollars available to take on additional debt without finding revenue from somewhere else. That's what I meant by sort of tapping, tapping out.
That'd be twenty, twenty-seven, twenty, twenty.
Twenty, twenty-eight, twenty-nine, we're at twenty-nine, twenty-thirty.
So if, if, if we went seventy-five million for school, twenty million for the county, we'd be in better shape, right?
Gives you ability to pivot. More flexibility, exactly. Ability to pivot if something came up. Thank you. Supervisor Bone.
Um, can you explain what structured principal really means? You also used the term delayed principal, so I'm trying to.
So delayed principal and interest only is probably the same thing. So essentially, what's happening here is, in this yellow, is there's no principal being paid back. So what we've done is we've basically taken principal from those years, spread them in these years.
Okay.
And then these three years have some principal, but not enough to make it a level payment. So we've taken that principal and spread it out in those years. So you've got level payments here. So basically, we're pushing principal out, which of course means you're pushing it out to higher interest rates, which is why you have the additional costs.
You're on page, oh, page sixteen. Following up on, on Supervisor King's comment. Or somebody's comment. Is if a COVID year came again and reading agencies came by, would they ding us if we were below twelve percent? Or not ding us if we were below ten percent?
So we didn't see, I'll use, I'll use history. We didn't see anybody getting downgraded last year who was in good financial health, had good unbalance, wasn't over-leveraged, and the economy wasn't falling apart. So we, so the three legs there were all solid.
Just didn't get upgraded, is what you're.
We didn't get any upgrades either.
They were expecting an upgrade and they didn't get it.
We did have, we had, we got, we had a couple of days in fact, that should have been upgraded on all year. They said, because we're not sure what's going on and how long we're going to be in this and how it's going to affect your economy. We just couldn't understand.
But does it matter? Would it matter? Would it have bad, were they anywhere near their equivalent of ten or twelve percent?
One of the entities was pretty high on their debt expenditure levels. But they have very strong, high income levels, a very strong economy. It's a very, it's a very urban area that has a very vibrant economy.
So back to page thirty-four, my apologies. I don't really understand when you say debt service is level for schools.
Thirty-four.
That's where I put my note, doesn't mean it's irrelevant to this. So, but I think you were talking about this graph when you said, you know, what Supervisor King was saying, or asked that the schools aren't having the capacity to, I guess, page thirty-three. You talk about thirty-three.
It's this one. So, yes, so the schools have nineteen point six million in their budget allocated for debt service. So we, we assume that's locked in, assume it doesn't change.
Can I stop you there? Has that been the case for the last ten years?
That number?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
Was it less?
We added, we had to add, when we did Blacksburg, Auburn, the Auburn Middle School.
So where did it come from? Yeah.
Tax increase.
No, I mean, what was the number before the tax increase came up? Okay. Okay. Okay, so keep going, I apologize.
Yeah, so, so this number was built up basically by virtue of having to increase.
Gotcha, gotcha.
Then, and I know we, we, obviously I've been working with you guys for a long time. I mean, we, we raised taxes again back in the early two thousands when we first started to like this building, the courthouse, things like that. But that, of course, went over to the general government side, but there were some schools too. We did build schools. So that's been built over time. I've heard you have basically used, or supervisors, increasing taxes.
Where did we ever get the ratio of, you know, schools are allowed to have nineteen million and the county is quote-unquote allowed to have whatever their rate is?
You want to talk that one?
It's just the way the debt worked out when we were issuing debt to cover the school, those school projects. The county already had that amount in their debt service and we were using it all. And then we had to increase the school, school side. And we kept it the same since then, we funded the same amount.
That's helpful.
Keep track of it the same.
And then you use the term tapped out on the revenue side. Can you kind of explain that?
That's what we're talking about here, is that essentially, once we have this new debt service in here, it's going to be above that nineteen million six all the way out through twenty twenty-eight. And then it only drops down about three hundred thousand, which is not a lot. So the big drop down is twenty-nine to thirty, where you get about two million dollars of capacity that could then be used to fund another bond issue, some, I guess.
So are all these considering that we have no new revenue? But every year, we have new revenue. And then we have a reassessment, which gives us even more revenue. So these graphs change every year because we have more revenue, is that correct?
Right, so you could allocate some of that revenue, take care of that. Absolutely, that is your choice.
And that's one thing, when you look at those scenarios, when we look at the additional funding, we talk internally, you know, well, is that something we could cover through revenue growth? Or is it significant enough that we need to talk about looking at a penny or two for a tax increase? You know, we, we have traditionally had pretty solid growth. So like in that example, it's too early to tell based on where we will be with fiscal year twenty twenty-three budget. But that's, those numbers are certainly something we could look at as we go into the budget season. See how we incorporate that.
I have two other questions. I skipped my page nine question, but you don't have to go back then. What do we do with the cash when we're not using it in the early years?
So for instance, if there's not debt service, but you've got the budgeted amount in there.
Right, I mean, we borrowed the hundred million and it's all there.
Oh, you mean if we borrow it all at once and it's not been spent by the schools? So it sits in a trustee account and basically earns what little interest we can earn, but as much as we can. It has to stay in there for the benefit of the bondholders until it's actually spent on the project.
And if the board were to consider that as an option, it means that we'll move with all due haste with our staff to start moving some of those projects along.
Sure.
We, we, we've got several of those project, projects in concept. We're ready to move once we know we have financing available to get those things underway.
You're shovel-ready, huh?
Close.
Last question, page thirty-eight. If I do my math, you know, if you compare option one A and B, I'm looking at option one B versus option three D or scenario three D, it looks like we're paying twice as much interest. Is that about right? Like you look at the number. If you're borrowing seventy-five million, you eventually pay out ninety-five million. If you borrow a hundred million, you're paying out hundred and twenty-nine million. So you're, you're, the first one, you're paying out twenty million. The scenario three, you're paying out thirty million.
Additional twenty-five million going from one B to three B. Plus.
And you're only increasing by twenty-five million.
Plus four million of interest. Or is it, no, it's ninety-five million, it's ninety-five versus
One twenty-nine.
One twenty-nine, so it's thirty-four million dollars differential between the two. So some of it's going to be the twenty-five million, obviously, and the rest of it's going to be the interest.
So the interest adds up because you're delaying paying principal. And so the interest equivalent, I guess is what I'm saying is it's actually costing us an extra couple of, you know, a percentage point or so.
Right.
Anyway.
Yeah, you'll see in the details where we actually put the, the true interest cost of the different scenarios. You'll see it is higher because we're shifting principal out at higher interest costs.
So what's the difference between that and ship? What is the difference between dividing it even in two tranches?
Are you talking about, you're actually talking about splitting up?
Because, you know, if we pay the interest now or pay the interest later.
So, so you're going back to why, why do it all at once, why wait, why not split it into two?
Because we're paying more interest, because we're delaying paying.
So okay, I think I understand where your, your question. So the scenario I showed earlier, the seventy-five million, is basically saying, okay, if rates go up, it's really going to kill us. You're saying, though, if we wait, could we basically fix some of the timing issue and not have to delay the principal? And the answer might be, if interest rates don't change, maybe. But if interest rates go up, we're going to be killed because you're, you're talking about over a twenty-year period versus delaying one year. So if that, let me say it a different way. Let's say it a different way. If we take fifty million and borrow it now, fifty million and borrow it later, the second fifty million, you're not earning it, you're not, you're not losing money because you're investing at a lower rate in terms of earning money, but you're paying it out. But that's over a one-year, one-year period or two-year period. You're doing twenty years of interest cost if it jumps up. And that's what really bites you, in my experience, over time, is that, that it's better to lose a little bit in that one year on that differential between borrowing at two percent more than than to have a fifty basis point hit over twenty years on that fifty million.
I got you, thank you.
You bet. Supervisor Levins.
Thank you for this detail that I'd like to look at and think about. But to go back with Supervisor King, if we max out at basically a hundred million dollars on the school side and twenty million for the county, it's going to be almost that twenty twenty-seven, twenty thirty before we'll have any capacity. And that's going to max us out for anything, additional school repairs, anything on either side, correct?
Only on the school side.
Only on the school side.
On the, on the county side of the ledger, you've got five million in the budget. And the debt service with twenty million is four point three, three point five, two point six. So you've got about two and a half million dollars three years out. So for the county side, you do have some dollars that you could use for pay, pay-go, where you're paying cash for projects, things like that, or if you needed to borrow some additional money, you've got the affordability side of it. So you do have some, some room on the county side of the ledger. It's the school side of the ledger that's, that's really, you'd have to find additional dollars to be the growth or, or an increase in taxes.
That's how we've been able to move some of the capital projects on the county side forward without borrowing. We've used some of that difference to cash funds a project. But we're running up against projects now that are six, seven, fifty-dollar projects. You don't have, not have money in the bank to pay go those, so they need to be spread out over time.
So it's, so it's a, the capacity side is, is limited. On the schools, the affordability side is locked up for a longer time unless you have additional revenues that you decide to put towards.
That's all I have for you, Kim, thank you.
Supervisor Shepherd.
A lot of numbers. Yes, I guess, all, all his questions and some of mine. You've got that run out to twenty forty-two, is that when the debt will be satisfied?
Yes, sir, that's basically looking at roughly a twenty-year horizon for the debt service. In our experience, the, the schools after twenty years probably need some renovating and things like that. So does it really make sense to continue paying for it while you're maybe borrowing again to remedy? Okay, yeah, all my questions are answered. Going to last, I guess, anybody got any follow-up questions?
I got one, if he's got a minute. On page thirty-six. On thirty-seven and thirty-eight. One scenario is eighty million dollars. And another one is seventy-five. My figure's right, on first scenario, it's seventy-five million dollars, ninety, it costs us ninety-four million. Level debt service, yes, right, yes, sir. I own the eighty million. Five million dollars, we borrowed five million more dollars, it's going to cost us eight million dollars in interest, borrowing five million, is that right? Uh, you see where it says ninety-four million, and now you're on eighty, it says a hundred million.
And that's a diff, yeah, that's, it's a six point three million total for an additional five million dollars.
So that's what I'm saying, it's going to cost you more to borrow five million, you know, because of additional interest, yes.
It's, it's the five million plus the interest on the five.
So it's going to cost you six million dollars to borrow five million.
No, 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 because the five million's a part of that six million, so take, subtract the five from the six, the rest of it is interest. So in that six million, part of that is the principal you're repaying.
It costs you an additional one point three to borrow five.
To borrow an additional five, yes, that's, that's right. Yeah, it's one point three, it's, it's a little over a million dollars of interest for twenty years on that five million. So it is six million, you're right, but of the six million, five million is the corpus, the principal that's being paid back, so the difference is the interest. Go ahead.
Can you talk to us, just explain again, what would cause us to raise taxes? What would make us raise taxes?
If you're borrowing more than, in this scenario.
No, just that scenario.
More than a hundred millions, then these numbers are going to keep going up.
Mm-hmm.
So like in this case, it's a million seven, and I understand you've got a little bit of money in there, capital fund, that you could probably fund this, or you said you may have some growth from a standpoint of assessed value growth, but when these numbers start getting bigger, if we didn't do some structure, for instance, you know, then those numbers are going to get bigger. Of course, if we don't do any structure, then we start running into.
So to say that scenario, a hundred million structured, twenty million for the county.
Yeah.
Structured. Is there any reason why we would have to raise taxes at any point in the next ten years?
Assuming that the one point seven could come from funds on hand already in other pots, no, no increase needed.
And no disasters.
And no.
Disasters.
No disasters.
And no money for anything else.
Not for debt service.
Chair, the reason we wanted Courtney to be here tonight, I know that, uh, we discussed, we have a work session next Monday night about all things finance, that'll hopefully give the board an opportunity to go through this a little bit more, think of any other questions you might have. You will be prepared, I see Mark, Mark McGruder's back there, Mark, Angie and I will be there, uh, Monday night to, to talk about this, see, see what your, your thoughts are on how to look at things. Of course, we have a joint meeting with the school board on Tuesday night, I don't know if, it'll be up to you guys on Monday night, how you, how you feel about moving forward with that, but, uh, we've, we've crunched and crunched and re, well, we, Courtney and his team have crunched and crunched and recrunched, and I think what's been presented is a couple of options that the board could consider, and you just need to think about how you want to address that going forward.
Thank you, Courtney.
I think that's it, thank you, Courtney, I appreciate it, Courtney. All right, is there a motion to come out of work session?
Motion.
Any discussion?
Aye.
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 Six ayes.
Uh, next item is the items of consent, zero motion.
Send move.
Send move.
Motion in a second, this is our discussion.
Aye.
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 Aye. Aye. Next up is new business. It's one participation settlement, opioid-related claims. Motion in a second. Give a little brief synopsis. Does anyone have any questions for Marty on that?
Just to make it clear, this is the distributor settlement, so it's dealing with companies that were, um, distributing the opiates during the time period. The full value of the settlement is, uh, about twenty-six million, twenty-six billion dollars. Uh, about five hundred and three million of that will be coming into Virginia, uh, and then we get, uh, certain percentages of that based on, uh, the formula that was developed with all the localities that are settling, and also based on, a percentage of, of money that we give from the abatement authority, uh, so the five hundred and three million, fifty-five percent of that goes to the authority, fifteen percent is allocated to localities, we get one point two percent of that fifteen percent. Uh, then fifteen percent goes to Commonwealth for their costs, and then thirty percent, uh, goes, uh, I'm sorry, thirty percent goes to the localities, fifteen of it's unrestricted, fifteen is restricted, meaning we'll have to use it for opiate. Paying fifteen, we won't have to, uh, apply to that type of use if we don't want to, um, and then, uh, the remaining fifteen goes in the authority that we can then seek and get grants for, a lot of money. There's also other settlements coming, the, uh, Purdue Pharma, they, they filed bankruptcy, that's close to finishing, uh, so we'll be getting money. Uh, we, we won't get direct money on that, the money will be going into the, uh, Commonwealth, into the different states, uh, and then the money will then be put into the abatement authority, we'll be able to pursue that money down the road. Uh, and the same thing with, there's one other bankruptcy, I, Al, Al Mallacrop, who was a, uh, a manufacturer, uh, as well, distributor, so there's a, there's a few different things, but this is a big chunk of the, of the distribution settlement.
We don't have any hard numbers yet, and probably for a while.
All right.
All right, any other questions? Madam Secretary, if you call, roll.
Mr. Stone.
Aye.
Mr. Moss.
Aye.
Mr. King.
Aye.
Ms. Levins.
Aye.
Mr. Shepherd.
Aye.
Chairman Zikowski.
Aye.
Six ayes.
Uh, next up, established officer of elections, daily compensation.
Send move.
Oh, sorry, a second.
Okay, you have a motion, Supervisor King and a second Levins. Is there any discussion?
I do appreciate this team put on there, I mean, they're doing a lot of good work, it brings them up with, well, a little bit over par, speaking about here.
Thank you for bringing it forward, Todd.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Any other comments, hearing that, Madam Secretary?
Mr. King.
Aye.
Moss.
Aye.
Ms. Stone.
Aye.
Mr. Shepherd.
Aye.
Ms. Levins.
Aye.
Chairman Zikowski.
Aye.
Six ayes.
Next up, proclamation, National Breast Cancer Awareness Month, October twenty twenty-one.
Send move.
Right.
Motion in a second, any discussion?
I'd like to make a comment, as a breast cancer survivor, this is really important, make sure you go get checked, ladies, thank you.
Please remember, not only women get breast cancer, men can get it too.
All right, no more discussion, Madam Secretary.
Mr. Moss.
Aye.
Ms. Stone.
Aye.
Mr. Shepherd.
Aye.
Ms. Levins.
Aye.
Mr. King.
Aye.
Chairman Zikowski.
Aye.
Six ayes.
All right, leads us to reports, starting with our county attorney.
Um, just, just, I forwarded some numbers to you guys, um, G I S on the census. That, that's just kind of a preliminary thing, um, it's, what, what we'll be waiting on next is, state has to set the, uh, the districts, um, because of the, the law that we can't have split precincts, and so we can't, you can't do anything district-wise until you see what they've done, so that when we do set it up, there is a split precincts, because right now we have a bunch of them. Um, and you guys remember, we proved the waiting, that, we, we did get a waiver for this election, will be the case next time. So once we get that, another kind of delay, they're having some difficulty finishing their work, so, uh, it could be a little bit of time. Uh, meanwhile, I know they're looking at the numbers and trying to figure out, uh, what precincts we might have to change, where, where we may need to move some of those things because of just the five thousand person, excellent, we can have it in precinct. Once you start getting to that number, you're quite, change it, expand it, or decrease it, move it, and so we're looking at those kinds of things right now, so I think it'd be interesting that the, the main work will be really probably beginning next year.
Question?
Can I say something because it's my district? That's the problem. Um, I, we all know why my district is the problem, because the students weren't here when the census was counted, so we're going to set up a scenario in which in ten years, if the students are here, my district is going to have more people than everybody else, so we're going to have to shrink it back down. I know this is unavoidable, um, looking at the demographics of my district, specifically the age demographics, I don't know that, I don't know that adding more student residents, I would like to discuss the option of not adding more student residents and looking at maybe some more single-family residential, if we have the option to look at the boundaries of my district and not go into dorms and campus, um, because I think I'm, I'm overwhelmingly, um, in the nineteen, or the eighteen to twenty-two age bracket, and I don't think there's a lot of diversity represented by my voice on this board if such a huge percentage of my voting residents are in a four-year age range, if that makes any sense.
That makes sense, it, it's one. I was reminded, there's one thing else that would probably prevent that from happening, is, uh, to, to live on campus, you have to date, they need to be E and F, because, as you guys remember, we have a, we have an on-campus precinct, uh, at Tech, and, and they're E and F, so not G.
Yeah, um, and then also, I know my district is one of the districts that's, same was that for another precinct, because G two, I believe, is maybe beyond the max of the allowed.
I'm not sure, I, I, I think that was one of the ones that was getting close to it.
Um, I would like to specifically express a preference for a, um, institution of, maybe like a civic institution, a library, a school, something like that, versus a house of worship. My district is so incredibly ethnically and religiously diverse that that can sometimes make people uncomfortable. So when we're looking at locations, I would like to look at civic location versus churches. That's it, thank you.
Can I ask you a question? So, um, what does it take, what would it take to have any of us have to run for reelection next year? Anything?
Oh, no, you wouldn't, no, you wouldn't have to.
Would delegates have to run again?
Uh, I'm not sure about that, because, but not you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Marty.
Yep.
All right, county administrator.
Just want to report that I appreciate all of Angie's help, uh, one day last week and one day this week, we've interviewed a total of eight candidates for the assistant county administrator position, finished up earlier today. Be spending time over the next week evaluating what we heard, and seeing if there's some opportunities to move forward with that, but I'm very excited. We have some very good candidates for that position, and appreciate all the time that Angie devoted to it as well, because when it's a busy week, and then you knock two days out for interviews, it is really busy week. Um, the only other thing I have, uh, to mention, just reminder that we have the work session, uh, to talk about financial issues next Monday night at six o'clock? Six thirty?
Six thirty.
Six thirty, thank you. The joint meeting with, uh, Montgomery County Public School Board on Tuesday night at.
Seven.
Seven, thank you. I have both those on my calendar at the wrong time, so that's why I always look at big. And the only other thing I'll mention is, uh, in my role as V L G M A president, I'll be making two trips, two different times next week to Richmond, so couldn't get them consecutively, so I'll be up and back on Wednesday, and then up and back again on Friday. That's all I have.
All right, go down through the board, starting with Supervisor Levins.
I wanted just to shout out for the Department of Social Services for their hosting of the job fair today, and also, it was the Battle of the Birds this past weekend, and congratulations to Christians for castles and demons.
Supervisor Demonts.
I don't have anything to report, thanks.
Supervisor Shepherd. Supervisor Bone.
Just want to, um, tell Supervisor Biggs, because I'm sure she's going to watch this, that we miss you, we care about you, and we're really, really sorry about your family member and your family having the loss, and we wish you the best in wrapping things up and eventually coming home, and, uh, if there's anything we can do, please let us know, that's it.
Supervisor King.
I have no report, but just want to remind people, get out and vote. And I want to thank Connie and her staff for all that she does for the citizens in Montgomery County, to make sure everybody is able to vote. And, uh, I do want to tell Craig, I appreciate him and his staff, and, thank you, Marty and everybody, do a great job for the citizens of Montgomery County, and I do appreciate it.
Uh, I got the, uh, we've got the, uh, Revolution on the Frontier, uh, this Sunday afternoon in Allegheny Springs. Anybody who's interested, a little bit of Revolutionary War history right here in our own county.
Dedication of the century farm, too.
And a dedication of the century farm, which brings us up to a total of eight.
That's, that's correct, yes, sir.
Which we need to, we need to increase that, I'm sure we have a lot of century farms, and I will ditto your comments, Supervisor Bone on, uh, our vice chair, um, sure. The trip, and a safe trip home, that's all I've got. We are adjourned.